My tape is on.
And, four, three, two.
Good evening and welcome to the April 17, 2018 Business Meeting of the Council of the Borough of Ringwood. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed on Channel 77 throughout the week. Kelly, statement of compliance, please.
Adequate notice of this business meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Law, PL 1975, Chapter 231, setting forth the time, date, place, and purpose of this business meeting by consent agenda resolution 2018-14 adopted January 1, 2018 through a legal notice published in the Suburban Trends issue of January 7, 2018, and through notices emailed to the following name newspapers and posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on January 3, 2018, the Suburban Trends and the Birken Record. At this time, please silence all electronic devices during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Here.
Davison?
Here.
Ferretti?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Here.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Here.
O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Spear?
Here.
Also present, Borough Manager, Director of Department of Public Works, Scott Heck, Deputy Borough Manager and Borough Clerk, Kelly Halowitz, and Borough Attorney, Richard J. Kleemack. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scoot out from underneath here. Thank you.
We didn't test this mic. First thing on our agenda this evening is a proclamation and presentation to the Ringwood CYO St. Catherine's 3rd and 4th Grade Boys Basketball Team, honoring their undefeated season and their Group 4 Parochial School Basketball League Champions and National League Champions. I'd like to call up Head Coach Robert Montalbano and Assistant Coach Jeffrey Coons, please.
I would like to say a couple words about the team. I know they were, was it 19-0 on undefeated season? Do you want to just give it a couple of quick highlights? Sorry to put you on the spot, Coach.
First of all, thank you to the mayor and council for inviting us today. My kids, I think, are great examples of what it takes to be a team, work together, to achieve good things, and I'd like to say that they could be a great example for our town and the other kids. They're always doing great. They're coming to practices on time. They're having fun. They're listening to coaches, listen to their parents, thanks to their parents as well. Parents were fantastic. We couldn't do without them as well. And I just want to say congratulations to you guys again, and we're really happy to be honored tonight. Thank you.
Gentlemen, as I call your name, would you please come up here? Michael Cunningham. Gavin Kaiser. And Hunter Struble. Let me read what these proclamations read. Recognition Award presented to the boys for your outstanding accomplishment on the undefeated 19-0 St. Catherine's of Bologna 3rd and 4th Grade Boys Basketball Team, Group 4 Parochial Boys Basketball League Champions, National Division. Your dedication and commitment to this sport is commendable and example to all young players in the area. Presented with congratulations and pride by Mayor John Spear and the Ringwood Council on the 17th day of April 2018. Our champions. Congratulations. Why not? Buddy, you want to get some photographs? You don't have to make it two rows.
Want to take a break, John?
Yes. Yes, we'll take a five-minute recess.
You have the banner?
Yeah. Banners, hardware, bring it all out. That's what we want to see.
Oh, wow.
Big smiles, guys.
They've earned it. They've earned a little spotlight.
How many of you guys are on the next board?
Yes, and congratulations, guys. Congratulations, guys. Good luck.
See you soon.
Service was carried, too.
No, no. What are you talking about? I'm doing that ordinance now.
It's supposed to be a quick meeting, Bolton.
Doing that now.
So I'm told.
I mean, it's a very light bulb.
No, it's what they're playing.
No. We introduced it at the last meeting.
I agreed. I said, I told Scott I wanted a quick meeting.
The parents are like, no, no, get going.
Actually, he always gets mad at me.
Auditors.
The what now?
Auditors.
Oh, that meeting will be a long one, yeah.
Good. How are you doing?
Saving my questions for that one.
Nice job.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Should stay. It's fun.
I'm not government-ish.
Boy Scouts stay months for a while, right?
I mean, Boy Scouts, you actually get a badge. Or it's one of the requirements.
Is that why they stayed that much time?
Yeah, there's a citizenship in your community badge, and you have to attend municipal meetings. That's one of the requirements.
Has to be a council or should it be like?
I don't know. I don't remember. Citizenship in your community, mayor badge? I don't know if it has to be a council meeting or if it can be a planning board or...
Okay.
If you just pull it back, which might be easier for him to... Oh, he's sitting the other way. Oh, that's fine.
Remembered that you definitely had to do it? Couldn't remember all the requirements.
Nobe Bosco, who is Trail the Eagle.
You want to get him on the microphone?
Citizenship, citizenship, nation citizenship.
If you just put it down.
The world.
The world.
Because I can just hand you this if you...
But it could be whatever.
Should I introduce him?
Yeah, we're just, we're not on yet. Okay, so you let me know.
I remember the meeting that I went to. I don't remember if I am at Nobe or... Because I know I definitely went to...
You ready, John?
Like, a borough meeting. It was my first big, grand impression.
Okay. Okay, my tape is on. Okay, we're...
Okay. And we are back in our April 17 meeting. Our next order of business is a presentation on the New Jersey Clean Energy Program. Councilwoman O'Keefe, if you would, introduce our next speaker.
I'd be happy to. Recently, the Ringwood Municipal Green Team had recommended to this council that we do a local government energy audit, and we invited our local nonprofits and our school boards to learn more about the program. And with that, I'd like to thank Ken Littell, our New Jersey Clean Energy Program Outreach Team Manager, for coming out to Ringwood this evening to educate our community on this important program, which helps our schools, our municipalities, and our nonprofits save money. So, thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Councilwoman O'Keefe. I don't know where it's best because I know you all want some information, and I don't want to necessarily talk with my back to everybody, so...
Cameras facing that way.
Cameras facing that way, yes.
Will they be able to see?
You can just move that mic wherever you want. Whatever's good.
Well, thank you for inviting me to join you all tonight. So, I know that some school district people and nonprofits were invited, so who do we have in the audience in addition to the council?
Nonprofit.
Non...
New West Center for Education Arts and Recreation.
Okay. Anybody else from one of the schools or... Okay. Well, feel free to share this with your friends and neighbors after the event. As they said, they're recording the presentation, so you'll be able to refer back to it, and I have some paperwork that I can share with people if you're so interested. New Jersey's Clean Energy Program has been around a while and has various different pathways as far as various different... Some people might call them programs, and we're going to go through some of the high-level details on that. Tonight, we're going to focus on commercial and industrial, which would be schools and government and nonprofits and small businesses and large businesses, but there is also a residential portion to this program. And, as I said, I have a brochure with me that if anybody's interested in the program and wants to take this home to reference, then this covers all the different programs, just gives you a little brief synopsis of what that portion of the program actually does. So, again, thank you for having me come to speak tonight. I am with New Jersey's Clean Energy Program Outreach Team. I lead the team, and we basically have a number of account managers that are available throughout the state to come and work with you or your company or your church or whatever that might be to be able to help you navigate the various different programs and identify maybe some of the ideas of what you might be able to do towards saving energy. Don't use the term or don't confuse the term "account manager." This is not a sales position. We're not selling you anything. We're actually working on behalf of New Jersey's Clean Energy Program through the Board of Public Utilities, and so we're doing that for free. If you call us out here, there is no charge. There's no charge for any kind of help that we give you. So, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that before we dive into the details. So, some of the background is that the New Jersey's Clean Energy Program is funded through the societal benefits charge. So, it's everybody's utility. What electric utilities everybody had?
Public service.
Public service?
Jersey Center.
Or Orange and Rock.
Rockland Electric.
So, we've got a little bit of everybody. So, if you're on one of the investor-owned utilities and you look at your utility bill and until you saw this today, maybe it never even occurred to you, that there's a line-item charge on there that says SBC or societal benefits charge. And this is actually the money that funds these programs. So, you've already been paying into this. So, you know, be willing to take advantage of it and participate in the programs to get some of the incentive money back. And what is this actually intended to do is to help save energy and lower operating costs in addition to protecting the environment. That's how a lot of these programs actually got started, was working through to protect the environment and reduce emissions, et cetera. And then we also want to concern ourselves with changing the business mindset to be able to run a more energy-efficient facility. And I'm going to need to turn this around a little bit because I can't see what slides...
You can take it out of there if you want or whatever.
Okay.
Is there a way to turn down the lights so it's a little light?
Can you off-key that?
It would be better with turning down the lights a little bit.
Okay. Everybody see the slides better? Trying to get out of everybody's way. So, what I'm showing you here, I'm not going to go through each one of these programs tonight, but I'm showing you here is the full suite of programs that are available under New Jersey's Clean Energy Program. And they are focused on this slide deck for commercial and industrial. We do also have a suite of residential programs that we could talk about, and I think we had Kim Hoff out here last fall...
Yes.
...who actually did a presentation in reference to that. But you can start out with audits. You either have a couple of possibilities: benchmarking or the local government energy audit, which is what Ringwood's taking advantage of right now. And then you also have the possibility of participating in a direct-install program, and we're going to get into some of the details of the direct-install program, but essentially that's a turnkey program. You really don't have to do anything if you elect to use that particular program. And then we also have the pay-for-performance programs. If you want to do more of a whole building process, then you can actually do pay-for-performance. Takes a little bit longer. We're not going to go into a lot of the deep details there, but if you know a business or a government, a school district that's interested in doing something like that, then we can help you and get into the details of what's actually needed for that. The Large Energy Users Program is pretty self-explanatory. It's essentially, you know, energy users that use a lot of electricity and a lot of gas, and there are thresholds for that. Again, we're not going to dig into those particular details tonight. And then we also have the equipment rebates. This is the simple process, the prescriptive program called Smart Start. We have it for both existing buildings and new buildings, and we're going to talk about some of those details tonight. And then at the very end of the process here, there's also the combined heat and power. So, if you have a facility that's got a generator, is considering putting in a generator, and wants to recapture some of the heat from that generator, then you can actually get involved in the combined heat and power. We won't go into a lot of those details tonight, but if you know somebody who's thinking about that, then let us know, and we can certainly help you out. And then last but not least is electric storage. The program's actually re-up every year, so we're at just about at the end of the fiscal year. The fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th every year, and so some of the electric storage elements are probably going to be reinstated and brought back in for fiscal year 19, which starts on July 1st of 2018. So, the idea here is to be able to help walk you through the process. Do you know what you want to do? Do you know what kind of energy-efficient measures or how you want to save energy for your particular facility? How large is it? And what kind of elements that you're trying to include in that? And what are your goals as far as actually doing a program through New Jersey's Clean Energy Program? And again, we can do this in little steps so that we can help you go through the entire process. So, if you need some help, then we can actually start out working with benchmarking, and then we can go to local government energy audit if you're interested in that. And the local government energy audit is really for nonprofits and for school, you know, for government agencies, school districts, town works, public works, department, highway departments, things like that. Okay? So, what's benchmarking all about? We're all familiar with miles per gallon. That's how you rate how efficiently the car is operating is miles per gallon. In the electric world or the energy world, we look at it as energy use intensity, or EUI. And benchmarking allows you to take your total utility bills, how much you're spending every year, and compare yourself for the same kind of building or same kind of facility to other facilities that are like yours. And you can do it more specifically regionally, you know, for things that are, people that are in New Jersey, companies that are in New Jersey, as opposed to, you know, looking at the entire country. The Clean Energy Program will actually help walk you through that process. There's a way to do things onboard, online with Energy Star, and you can actually, when you get done, you would get a report like this that would give you a benchmarking score so you can have an idea of what is available or how you rate next to other companies of your similar functions. Okay? The benchmarking process with Clean Energy Program will also give you some hints as to the kind of things that you can do, but it doesn't necessarily dive into a lot of the deep tails, details. It's really giving you a high-level overview of, okay, you're doing really well or you're doing not so well compared to your, another colleague, another company, or another township or whatever. It'll give you an idea of how you're performing from an energy efficiency standpoint. So, you actually open up, it's open to commercial, industrial, agricultural, and nonprofit organizations. The program covers 100% of the cost of your benchmarking process, so it's not like you have to pay anything out. And then the Energy Star Portfolio Manager, that's what I was showing you here a minute ago, will actually help to create a report that you can look at and have with some suggestions for improvement from the Clean Energy Program Outreach Team. Okay? So, that's one step. Now, you've got a kind of an idea of what direction you want to go in. What's the next step? You've never done this before. You have no idea. Do I have a T-12 light bulb, a T-8 light bulb, but do I need LED? Do I need to change my boiler? I have no idea. I'm really not comfortable with that. I've never dealt with that before. So, what the local government energy audit is intended to do is be a comprehensive audit, which we will create a report for, for the infrastructure for your entire facility. And it's open to the facilities with a peak demand of 200 KW. Now, if you find that you have more than 200 KW for your facility, don't completely close that down. You reach out to the folks at LGEA. There may be workarounds. Given a certain set of circumstances, there may be a way to get a waiver. So, we've set the rules in place to try and limit projects that don't necessarily belong there, but there may be extenuating circumstance that would allow you to actually participate even if it exceeds 200 KW. And I don't know if, I'm saying 200 KW. 200 KW stands for kilowatts, 200 kilowatts, so it's basically 200,000 100-watt light bulbs. You know, that's effectively what you're looking at. The program actually covers 100% of the audit costs, so there will be an ASHRAE Level 2. ASHRAE is Association of Heating, Air Conditioning, and I can't remember the entire acronym, Refrigeration and Air Conditioning. And they actually create all these different levels of audits. They have a Level 1, Level 2, Level 3. Level 2 is kind of the middle of the road, and you can actually have this audit done, and it can be up for a cost of up to $100,000 per entity. So, like, Ringwood Borough Town Hall would be one entity. Ringwood Police Department would be another entity. So, you can work those, and that's per fiscal year. I just mentioned a few minutes ago that it's fiscal year basis, things re-up. And then that's per project, per entity. Exceptions are possible, so if you think that you're going to go way beyond that, then certainly want to talk to the team to get an idea of a way to work around it. Okay? So, you've had your energy audit. The one thing that doesn't say on the slide is they actually do what we call an LGEA exit interview. Somebody will come from the implementation team and meet with you and say, "This is the audit. Here's the report. Here's the highlights. Here's the recommendations that we would make and the potential incentives that you can actually get if you institute these various different energy-saving measures." Okay? So, the LGEA shouldn't be considered the end of the story. It's really on the front end of the story. We have seen people do LGEAs and then not necessarily proceed with doing any energy efficiency measures. You know, I think to do yourself the best service, you probably want to consider going ahead and doing one of the projects afterwards. So, how do you do that? One of the elements is something called direct install, almost self-explanatory, is basically it's a turnkey type of process where there are actually direct-install contractors all over the state of New Jersey that will come out and work with you on a turnkey basis. Once you know what the measures are, they'll actually come in and kind of re-audit some of the things to make sure they know the exact counts, exactly what you need to change, which those elements are going to be. And then there's fixed-cost measures that can be done underneath the direct-install energy audit. So, it's not like you have to worry about going out to bid to get three prices or anything of that nature. It covers primarily lighting, HVAC, and refrigeration. This particular program has a pretty quick turnaround time. As I went through the list earlier, I mentioned things like pay-for-performance. That can be a rather long lead time. You're talking about whole-infrastructure type of facility changes. So, with the direct install, you can do it on a much shorter lead time, like four to six months, which is a pretty quick lead time in this particular arena here. So, what it actually does is it's going to provide up to 70% of the cost of the project under the direct install. The entity would then be responsible for the additional 30% cost of the direct-install measures, whatever actually gets completed. It can be handled for up to $125,000 per project cap and then $250,000 per entity cap for the fiscal year. Again, if you think you're getting close, have a conversation. We can maybe work things around things, depending on the size of the facility, could go back to the BPU and talk to them about it. So, we just need to know what all the elements are to be able to provide you the right decisions. So, the project also has to pass something called the cost-benefit test. It isn't something that you're going to necessarily be directly involved in, but these are calculations that are being done behind the scenes. So, your DI contractor, your direct-install contractor, will work through this process with you to determine what measures will allow that project to be cost-effective and for it to process underneath the direct-install program. We actually do have a number of handbooks that you, or a handbook that you can work with, and you can work with the direct-install contractors to determine what the actual measures would be. Okay? So, you've decided direct install is not necessarily the way you want to go, but you still want to get some measures. So, I see light bulbs all over the place. Maybe you want to change those out to tubular LED light bulbs. How can I go about doing that? So, there's a program called the Smart Start Buildings Program, and that covers both existing buildings and new construction buildings. It's for equipment replacement and renovation and remodeling, as well as new construction. Interesting thing about new construction, new construction is not necessarily a building that comes out of the ground. So, let's say you decided that you wanted to completely renovate this space and turn it into something else. Now, it's going to become office space rather than a town hall for gathering, then that would be completely repurposing of the particular building, and you could actually treat that as new construction. Additions fit into that new construction basis. So, new construction isn't always the cut-and-dry, stick-built coming out of the ground. So, we have two different types of measures within the Smart Start. There's the prescriptive, which is simply, and I'm not looking at the dollars on the list, so don't quote me on this, but, you know, it might be $4 for a tubular LED light bulb if you're going to replace a particular type of bulb, or $10 for a downlight or something to that effect. That would be a prescriptive incentive. Or a custom incentive, so you want to go in and put in an entire lighting control system or a special building maintenance system, building management system, then you could work that under the custom program. They don't fit the nice and neat prescriptive program underneath those specific details. This has a couple of different types of caps. The incentives are up to $500,000 per the electric account, which is a little bit different from what we were saying before for an entity. So, like, a school district might have multiple accounts for that same school because there's different buildings on that same property. This is per electric account, and $500,000 for electric and $500,000 for gas. Okay? Some of the incentives that can actually be covered are things like lighting and lighting controls. You can do packaged heating, ventilating, and cooling, HVAC, or heating, ventilating, air conditioning. You can also do boilers and hot water heaters, chillers, variable frequency drives. There's all kinds of different measures that you can actually add into this particular program. They're all subject to pre-approval. For the lighting specifically is subject to pre-approval, so if you're thinking about doing lighting, don't just run out and buy everything, install it, and then hope you're going to get the incentive when you get done. It's a better... So new construction isn't always the cut-and-dry, stick-built coming out of the ground. So we have two different types of measures within the Smart Start. There's the prescriptive, which is simply, and I'm not looking at the dollars on the list, so don't quote me on this, but you know, might be $4 for a tubular LED light bulb, if you're going to replace a particular type of bulb. Or $10 for a downlight, or something to that effect. That would be a prescriptive incentive. Or a custom incentive, so you want to go in and put in an entire lighting control system, or a special building maintenance system, building management system, then you could work that under the custom program. They don't fit the nice and neat prescriptive program underneath those specific details. This has a couple of different types of caps. The incentives are up to $500,000 per the electric account, which is a little bit different from what we were saying before for an entity, so like a school district might have multiple accounts for that same school, because there's different buildings on that same property. This is per electric account, and $500,000 for electric and $500,000 for gas, okay? Some of the incentives that can actually be covered are things like lighting and lighting controls. You can do packaged heating, ventilating, and cooling, HVAC, or heating, ventilating, air conditioning. You can also do boilers and hot water heaters, chillers, variable frequency drives. There's all kinds of different measures that you can actually add into this particular program. They're all subject to preapproval. For the lighting specifically is subject to preapproval, so if you're thinking about doing lighting, don't just run out and buy everything, install it, and then hope you're going to get the incentive when you get done. It's a better thing to go ahead and submit the project for preapproval and make sure you have to, that you've got the right specification. We can get into more details, there are actually different organizations like the Design Lights Consortium and Energy Star that both list qualifying-type products, and so we kind of follow those products as far as lighting goes. So there's definitely things in place that we would help you look at and decide if those are particular measures that are going to meet what you need to and meet the criteria of the program. The custom incentives are designed to be much more flexible, and you can actually, they have to be proved to be cost-effective for the project that you're working on. Custom is even more important to have a preapproval process. The implementation team will actually work with you to go through the process of the paperwork, identify what you've done or what you're thinking of doing, to make sure that it meets all the criteria that it needs to. It'll pay for up to 50% of the cost of the project, so you'll be responsible for the other 50%. So a lot of people say, well, maybe I'll just consider direct install, because that'll pay for 70% instead of 50%. It also has, rather than having a prescriptive incentive like $4 per light bulb, it pays based on kilowatt-hours, KWH, it'll pay 16 cents per kilowatt-hour, or it'll pay a $1.60 per therm. For those of you that are not all that familiar with that, those terms, kilowatt-hours, or you know, your energy use over time, and thermes are how much gas you're actually using, again, over time. So you'd see these on your utility bills. There is a minimum first-year energy savings requirement for the custom projects, that needs to be at least 75,000 kilowatt-hours. So we'll help you go through that and make sure that it meets it. If you're close and you're not quite sure what to do next, the team can actually make some suggestions of maybe some other things that you might want to include. Okay, so there are the programs. There's a combined heat and power, there's a pay-for-performance for much more comprehensive project, much more detailed. If you're completely redoing a building, so we can get into those details at a different time, but we're available to work with you. We have account managers that can come out and sit down with you, we can talk to you on the phone. Here's some of the contact information for how you can get ahold of us. Certainly, you know, if you want to get my card at the end of the evening, then I'm happy to give that to you and talk to you and help you through any of the programs that you need help with. If you want to take kind of a quick synopsis home with you, I do have a bunch of these one-page brochures that just kind of list all the different programs and give you an idea of what they are and how you might fit. But we're here to help with the whole process, so let us know if we can do anything to help you with that process. So does any, I went through that kind of quickly, because they told me I couldn't do a three-hour presentation.
[laughing]
So does anybody have any questions on anything we went through?
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Littell?
This is available to homeowners also, right?
Yes.
We did go through the one for buildings and nonprofits and schools, but I just want the community to know that this program is available to them also.
Right. Some of the things that are available under the residential pathway are the Home Performance with Energy Star, which is really a comprehensive project that'll help you kind of renovate your energy efficiency equipment throughout your entire house. We have, there's a residential new construction program. Again, new construction is kind of a gray term, in that it either can be stick-built out of the ground, or if you're completely renovating a space and changing its use. And then there's the cool advantage, warm advantage. Some of you might have heard about that in the past. You know, if you want to get a new HVAC unit for your home, then there's ways to get incentives for that. You can get a new heating unit or an HVAC unit, there's incentives for that kind of product. And then there's also something called Energy Certified Products, Energy Star Certified Products, so that you can actually get some direct incentives for purchasing new equipment. So if you go to a do-it-yourself center or something like that, there's some Energy Star incentives available through that. And then last but not least, there's also, one that's not on here is there's a recycling program, so that if you're recycling a refrigerator, I believe refrigerators and air conditioners are currently involved, if somebody's coming to pick up your refrigerator, then they can pick up the air conditioner, they're not going to come out and just pick up the air conditioner. But all of this information is available on the website, and certainly you can call us at the toll-free number that we can help walk you through the process if you have any other questions. So, other questions from, anything about the LGEA that you're getting involved in that you have any questions on, or?
We've been through the process quite a few years ago, so we've experienced it. The pump stations are something that we'd be interested, that's probably where we use most of our power. So we'll go through that process again there as well.
Sure. And when you said a few years ago, was that more than three years ago?
Yes.
It was 2011, I think.
Okay.
About, that's when it wrapped up the last time, and the municipality saw significant savings at that time, so they thought it was, I know you can do it every five years, is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I think the number I've been hearing is generally every three years.
Every three years, right.
Yeah, so I would say, I don't know if there's been any significant changes to the facilities since then, but you might want to consider doing it again. Obviously, electric rates have changed, gas rates have changed, you might want to consider doing it again, but I would highly recommend going the next step after you have the LGEA and going ahead and doing some actual measurable.
We did the direct-install program.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did that.
I misunderstood that, I apologize.
Yeah, no, we went through and I think we pretty much did every suggestion, or maybe one or two that we didn't, but no, we did it, we did all the buildings in the community, firehouses, yeah, we did them all.
Okay.
Aside from the LGEA, is there any benefit for, for members of the community to coordinate submissions? So let's say like one business versus another, is there any advantage to kind of coordinating with, let's say, the Chamber of Commerce, if they were to get a couple of the smaller businesses together and sort of do it in one block?
So like a couple of stores in a particular strip mall or something to that effect, or one block wanted to do something together? The way it's set up really is revolves around either entities, which could be a tax entity, or it could be around, we mentioned the accounts, the actual accounts. So that's usually how it splits out. That said, if it's one landlord that owns, you know, if some people are leasing the space and it's one landlord that owns all those particular businesses' property, then there's a possibility of being able to combine it that way. But just, you know, if you wanted to work with me together to try and do it as two separate businesses, it's not set up to be able to do that.
And with the, with the recommendations that come out of the audit, is there any kind of expiration on the timing for the incentives? So you know, if we complete the audit, let's say in June, do we have until September to take advantage of it, December, is there any sort of expiration date on the recommendation?
The recommendations that you would get in the LGEA would be based on what's currently available in the programs. So at the beginning, I mentioned that there is a fiscal year process, and things get revised and re-approved every fiscal year. So we're coming up on the end of that now. The only thing that would stop that from, you know, that would stop something from still being available is if that particular program changed because you flipped over into the next fiscal year, okay? So you know, if tubular lighting is my background, so excuse me for going back to lighting all the time, but if you're going to do a tubular LED and today it's a $4 incentive, and next fiscal year it's still a $4 incentive, you're okay. But if all of a sudden they decide, well, we want to drop it to a $2 incentive, then you would only be able to get the $2 incentive in the new year. So you, you know, the advice is that once you get the LGEA audit, to try and move it through as quickly as possible, but things do change periodically.
And the shelf life of the audit is probably the biggest problem, because after X amount of time, that audit expires, you have to do another one.
Yeah, I don't know that so much that the audit expires, is that things change, you know? It's, if you've done an audit on a particular facility and it's five years later, or you said the one was done in 2011, let's say you hadn't done all those measures back then, and you wanted to try and do one of the buildings that was in that audit, things may have changed. So you want to make sure you've got the most up-to-date information, but it's not, you know, in and of itself, it doesn't expire, it's the circumstances surrounding it.
I mean, in terms of the frequency, you were saying every three years, is there any benefit to keeping it recent so that perhaps there is less change and so they can go through the audit process faster?
I would say in general, you probably won't, very often, unless you didn't do something with the original audit, you won't usually be coming back to the same building over and over again. So is there an advantage to trying, doing them more closely together? I really wouldn't say that there's an advantage or disadvantage to doing it that way, other than the fact that, like I said, circumstances might change.
What's, what's the, like, return on investment? Is there time?
It varies. I can't quote you, excuse me?
Is that in the calculation on, you know, what's the, are you going to pay for an investment and whatnot?
So the energy audit will give you some ideas as to what kind of return on investment that you would be, what you would be getting if you instituted certain measures. The same kind of thing, the direct-install team would be able to give you an idea of what kind of return on investment that you would be getting for those particular measures. But I can't stand here and give you a particular number, because every facility's unique. There isn't like a specific number to work with.
Is there a criteria, a program based on a criteria of, of return on investment?
Well, there is a cost-benefit analysis, which has to be done on, like on the direct-install program. On the prescriptive program, the Smart Start Prescriptive Program, that's kind of built into the measures, but specifically on the direct-install program, they actually do a cost-benefit analysis, which kind of takes into account, you know, it's not so much based on return on investment, but whether or not it's paying it back, it has a certain cost-benefit analysis number to it. And if I, you know, if you wanted to dig into the details, I could find out what the exact numbers are and what the calculation is. Any other questions?
Yeah, other than the light bulbs, what is the type of technology out there?
Well, LED is probably, from a lighting standpoint, is probably the broadest one that we see, and it's not just light bulbs. I mean, you can change out entire fixtures, and the nice thing about LED lamps and fixtures is that now you can get little parts and pieces that can get added to it to make it very easy to do extremely efficient process. So you can add a whole advanced lighting control system to that relatively inexpensively compared to what you used to do. Like if you did fluorescent, you had like a $50 adder to get a dimming ballast on the fluorescent fixture. With LED, that's not the case. You can put a little occupancy sensor on the fixture, you could put a little daylight dimming sensor on, and tie it all into a central control system, and somebody can have remote management of that system, you could be doing it from your office and handle three, four, five buildings. So that's probably one of the biggest things that we see that we're getting into. Certainly, you know, we're seeing improved HVAC technologies. If you're getting, I don't, do any of the buildings have generators?
Oh.
Okay, have you done anything with combined heat and power?
No.
Okay, so there's definitely some things that you could do with combined heat and power, which, there's some pretty nice incentives that go along with that. And now we're also seeing things that are coming in called microgrids. So they're microCHPs, they're much smaller units to handle smaller facilities. So those are some of the things that we're actually seeing these days out in the marketplace. Not all of them are prescriptive, you know? We also have something out there that we don't really dig into here called the Customer-Tailored Pilot. If you really want to throw in everything in the kitchen sink, but it doesn't quite fit any of the other programs, the way they're written, you can work through the Customer-Tailored Pilot, and we can help work with you to figure out what's going to work and what kind of incentive you might be able to get from that. Thank you all very much. I'll stick around if anybody wants to grab my card, need one of the, one of the brochures. So thanks again for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Next on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes.
I need a motion to approve the March 20, 2018 Business and Executive Session Meetings. Councilman Bolton was absent, kind of, is what I said last time.
Second.
Discussion, roll call please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Still abstaining because I was sort of absent.
Davidson?
Yes.
Foretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
And a motion to approve the April 3 Executive Session. Councilman Noonan was absent.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Discussion, roll call please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Foretti?
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Stain.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is general public comment. At this time, if anybody wishes to address the mayor or council, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I have a question. When you say a general comment, what does that entail? Can you make your own comment about something about yourself?
Anything.
Anything. Anything you want.
Mayor, the only thing that, the only thing that I'm going to suggest is, our clerk, who works hard at the minutes, the back and forth is a little hard for her to keep track of the minutes and try to listen to it on the tape, so.
We can have one person.
Kelly has asked if we could try and maybe manage that a little better so she can take minutes.
Very good.
Thanks.
Yes, it's for any subject matter that the public may wish to.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Anne Sebecker, Fox Hill Lane in Ringwood. I wanted to just tell everybody about a couple things going on over at the New West Center. As you know, we're education, arts, and recreation, so working backwards, we have some great new recreation programs. You probably saw another front-page article about our goat yoga, which we can't schedule, the class is fast enough. We're also adding Tai Chi for all ages, we're adding some other types of meditation, trail running, natural obstacle course in the woods, so we've got some good recreation programs coming. Arts, we just introduced an acoustic open-mic series, the last Sunday of every month, the first one last, last two weeks ago was a big success, so we're hoping to, that'd be the springboard for our arts program. And then for education, which is really the cornerstone and where we really got started of when we reopened, I just wanted to announce, we're very proud that Jill Bergy, who's our lead educator and camp director, just won the Bergen County Audubon Society's Teacher Appreciation Award for the year for environmental education. So we have really good staff over there, we're adding new programs all the time, and we are a nonprofit there to serve the community, that is our mission, so we have people approach us all the times about, we would like to see this kind of program, that kind of program, and we're willing and able to serve the community and add programs as they're needed. One example was, a bunch of homeschool parents said, we have no labs, so we added a winter lab series, it was very successful, six sessions this winter, so we're here for the community, and we hope you all come out, support us, but also tell us what you need and want. And we are having an Earth Day celebration, we have Karen for Ringwood here on Saturday, which is amazing, and then Sunday, perhaps you'll head over to the New West Center from 10 to 3. We're doing a couple guided hikes that are co-sponsored by the Environmental Commission. We have our goats from the goat yoga place, we'll be there with some other farm animals. We have our aquaponics building, they're going to be doing a demo, we're getting close to opening the aquaponics farming system. We'll have the watershed ambassador, the Passaic River Coalition, Paquannock River Watch. We're having the primitive skills gentleman who teaches our primitive skills classes, which are selling out like hotcakes, so we have a lot going on for all ages, along with the nature walk, and we hope everybody will consider coming by on Sunday.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Ned Clausen, I've been around here for a while, and actually just got back. And I left a note for one of my favorite people here, Kelly, about something. I, by the way, just retired as the executive director of the Business Marketing Association headquartered in New York City, been around since 1922. It is one that drives all business to business in America, and all the major corporations were on the board of directors with me, including the head of General Electric, the head of IBM, the head of Verizon, and Wall Street Journal, and on it goes. The reason I'm up here bragging a little bit is that they just published a book about me, and that book talks about my 54 years in advertising from the mailroom to the boardroom, and there is things in there that my friend here, John, is surprised at, we talked the other night, my relationship with, and invite by President John Kennedy to have dinner. other night, my relationship with, and invite by President John Kennedy to have dinner, Ronald Reagan, George W. Bush, and believe it or not, Donald Trump. Before we became president, we had quite a josh together in different things. And Mitt Romney, Roger Ailes, who was the president of Fox until he died a couple of years ago, and Neil Cavuto, who had me on to interview me about taking over something, and a number of other big surprises in there. So I'm just publicizing what is going on here. And if you wanted to see the covers, I'll pass it around. But you're not allowed to look inside right now. There is a foreword by the man who was the number one editor of Business of Business Marketing Magazine and Advertising Age, the key two magazines in the world. The Business of Business Marketing now is folded into Age. But I'll pass it around so you can read the back cover. I just had ordered 100, so copies that were all bought already. And I don't, and now it's on Amazon, and they're going to Amazon, and now it's on Barnes &amp; Noble. But I thought since I'm a resident here for a long time, I would share this with you all.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You can look at the foreword.
Oh, sure, after I pass the book.
That was a big surprise, that foreword was a big surprise to me by a famous editor in their business, who's retired now himself. Anyway, that's, sorry.
It's our pleasure, Mr. Clausen. Anybody else would like to address the mayor and council at this time?
Seeing no one else, I'd like to move to close.
Roll call on closing public?
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Our next order of business, old business, public hearings and final passage of ordinances.
I'd like to move this to the next meeting.
Shall we move this to the next meeting?
Yeah, Mayor, the request of a few council members were to meet with the auditor first, and it was carried on to this meeting at that last meeting, so we carried it today. But so just, you can carry this to the next meeting, and it shouldn't have any problem introducing and adopting it, adopting at that meeting if so. This way you've had an opportunity to meet with the auditor, which I believe is next week.
Very well.
Motion, we'll need a motion on that.
Need a motion to carry?
The motion to carry the public hearing, the final reading and public hearing of ordinance 2018-03 to the meeting of, that would be what, Kelly?
May 15th.
May 15th.
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see any new business. Next on the agenda would be resolutions.
We just had a meeting, seems like two weeks ago, so that's why there's no new business.
Something like it.
What council meeting would be complete without a bill list? Resolution number 2018-98.
I like the last one better.
Whereas the chief financial officer is certified, the funds are available for the current bill list in the amount of $328,949.11. The supplemental payments in the amount of $3,346,485.20. And the merchant service fees in the amount of $139.05 to be listed to the following accounts, for a total of $3,673,573.36, of which $1,889,344 goes to the Ringwood Board of Education, $1,030,452.40 goes to Lake Manta.
Do we have a motion for resolution 2018-98?
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Next on the agenda are consent agenda resolutions.
I'll do it with the manager.
First, the mayor and council of the borough of Ringwood has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions. Now therefore be resolved, the following resolutions on the consent agenda are hereby approved. 2018-99, approval of consent. 2018-100, authorized redemption tax sales certificate various. 2018-101, approval of voided checks. 2018-102, approval of payroll and payroll transfers for February. And 2018-103, approval of payroll and payroll transfers for March.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a quick question on 101, which was the voided check. We don't, we don't mention what it's for, why it was voided, so it's voided and we're not reissuing it, but I just wasn't.
Anytime they have a voided check and keep track of the check numbers, they do a resolution so that it's tracked for that transparency. There's things that they, sometimes people lose checks and they reissue them, sometimes they don't reissue them. So it's an approval for a voided check of that number. So that number will no longer be in series.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes, we'll just take a roll call, please.
Sure. Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, the manager's report?
I have a very brief report. Really, we schedule a lot of meetings in the spring because of introduction of budgets and adoption of budgets, and you don't know how it quite works. We were going to cancel this meeting, but we kept it because the Green Team had this initiative going on, so that's why it's an abbreviated meeting this evening, and we have another one in a couple of weeks. So I have just a few brief things. First, I have in your, at your table in green is a resolution for stickers for the park and ride. I'm sure you guys are thrilled. But they unfortunately require a check instead of just a purchase order. Kelly, what number would this be?
It'll be 106.
106. Be resolved, municipal council of the borough of Ringwood hereby does authorize the payment of, in the amount of $597.30, to AG Solutions of Sarasota, Florida, for the park and ride decals as purchase order 18-00636. And ordinarily, vendors that take purchase orders, it just goes on the bill list, but because they want a physical check, we need to have this on tonight's meeting.
Very good. Anybody want to make that motion, resolution 2018-106?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Section.
A second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Nope?
Super quick discussion. They're removable, the decals?
Yes, they are.
They peel off? I just feel like that should be broadcast for everybody who might hesitate sticking one on their car if they peel off. It's a very good thing.
I'm going to strongly encourage everybody to have one on their car at the, at the park and ride.
The ticket, the tickets peel off.
Because otherwise, my phone rings about, how come I got a ticket? You know, because I decided not to put the sticker on. So I would really encourage everybody to put stickers on.
A question, just on the park and ride. Capacity, I mean, are we filled up?
We're not at capacity.
We're not at capacity.
We still have room.
We have a motion and a second, Kelly?
We do.
I always get lost at these times.
It's okay.
I'll take a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Mayor, just a very brief report. Opening day baseball was another outstanding event. Was great to see the kids on the field after this long winter, cold winter, and they're getting out and exercising and doing what they have to do, which is awesome. This weekend is girls softball opening day at 1:00 in the afternoon at the Stonetown Ball Field. Karen for Ringwood is also this weekend at 9:00 AM at the park and ride, and we already know that Weiss is having their Earth Day on Sunday. Of course, with the recreation in mind and the kids and safety, unfortunately, there's about 30 trees that have died from some type of disease at the Hat Field that have to be removed. So that field we have closed at this point. We worked with the state, we finally got approval today to take the trees down. I shouldn't say finally, they did, you know, work pretty quickly because it's a safety issue. So we have the approval today, so we're getting contractors. Before we can open that field up, those trees have to be taken down. Unfortunately, they're dead, and there's pieces that are falling, and their pines, they died very quickly. But having said that, safety issue, so bear with us on Hat Field, that will be up and...
Do you think that'll be cleared up?
I'm just getting prices now, now that we got the approval from the state, so as soon as we can, we will get that taken care of.
I'm getting questions already.
Yeah.
Just on women's softball.
Yeah, it's just, it's just too dangerous. We were surprised when we went there in the spring, you know, we inspect the fields, you know, several times throughout the year, last year, and we noticed that they were thin, but over the course of the winter, that whether it was a fungus or a bug or whatever it was, it just wiped out that whole side of the hill. So anyway, so we're dealing with that. I'm going to be very soon looking to the council members to talk about the paving program this year. You know, we talked a lot about it during the budget process, we talked a lot about it with the committee, and we're going to need to make a few decisions because we're going to need some direction. We have to do some designs, we have to put in some drainage and do whatever repairs we might have to do if in fact we're going to do road paving. So I just kind of ask you folks to kind of have that in the back of your head because that's rapidly coming, springs here, and we're already getting the drainage goal, so keep that in mind. I am very happy, I might even be happier than that, I'm not sure, but that Westbrook Road Bridge is finally open. I can't tell you the number of calls. I can't tell you the number of pothole builds. Like, there's no words to describe. Through that long, arduous process of the Westbrook Road Bridge being built, it's open. We know that there's a section of it that has to be paved, they still have to do more construction work, so there still is a little bit of dip coming on and off the bridge. That's not the final pavement. That's not the final pavement. That's not the final pavement. Because many...
So is that the final pavement?
It's not.
Okay.
Yeah, I had quite a few calls today to suggest that they did a terrible job because there's still a bump going onto the bridge, and so anyway, so that will be rectified as they finish up the rest of the project. They got to do some curbing, they have other things to do, that's not around the corner. But it's a pleasure to drive over a bridge that is not reeled with potholes and narrow lanes and so forth, so we're happy to see that. I also, while we were over there, asked the reservoir to remove those unsightly concrete blocks that have remained there for more than 15 years on the bend, so, which they did, so they've been removed. It gives a place, people a place to pull over, it gives, you know, you get over the bridge, some people get over there and wonder where they are and said, you know, they want to pull over, so that's a good spot. I sent around some pictures of our vehicles, I don't know where they're at, but I kind of shipped them around, you know, after 20 storms and years of abuse to some of these trucks. When you have 150 lane miles, you have a lot to do to show the condition of some of the trucks and how salt deteriorates the vehicles, and that's stuff that we're going to be talking about going forward. So just, that's just for your information. The DPW guys wanted to bring all the trucks down here for you, but I said, how about just pictures?
What's the vintage of some of the larger ones, like the big Ford and the Oshkosh?
I think the Oshkosh is late 80s.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of the trucks have a couple hundred thousand miles on them, but as you can see, the salt and the, just erodes the metal. It just, you know, their bumper's missing, they're, you know, it just...
Are there issues for parts for the Oshkosh?
Yes, yes.
I know that there was a corporation buy and everything else involved.
It's very difficult to get parts, you know, and so, I'm sorry, they didn't go this way. So, but anyway, so I just sent that for you, you know, to review and the stuff that we're going to have to be talking about at some point down the road. I sent out the packet to everybody, to all the council members earlier this month so that they had a little bit more time to review them. I assume that that worked better for everybody, so you're...
Yeah, thanks. Just nice to get it a day early.
Yep, so it helps, and sometimes the weekends get crazy, so.
Right.
Our flushing is wrapping up this Thursday, so Thursday's the last day for the flushing in Ringwood for the water system, so that, that program is coming to an end. Mayor Spear also asked me to move up our testing for the 1-4 dioxin, and according to our testing procedures that has been done before, I'm happy to report that once again, the municipal wells show non-detect for 1-4 dioxin. We also understand, you can tell I had a lot of time in the office today to answer the phone, we also understand there's a lot of potholes, there's a lot of berms, and there's a lot of items that need addressing, and, you know, our fields need be done, and keep in mind that we're a month behind in getting our stuff done. You know, we're still, we're still experiencing the effects of the winter, and the rain that's coming down is not helping, so we're behind, and we will get all that caught up, but that's what happens when the snow ends in mid-April instead of mid-March like it usually does. So be patient, if it's a priority, let us know. So, but we do have a list, if you go to that reporter problem, Jackie keeps track of all that, a work order gets generated, and they do prioritize them. And unfortunately, potholes happen all over the town all at once, it just doesn't happen in one area, so we're working on it. And some of the stuff that we did in January and February, because it was so cold, does not adhere to the pavement so well, so that comes out, so you got to redo all that stuff, unfortunately, but we can't leave the potholes, so. So anyway, so I appreciate everybody's patience, or will appreciate everybody's patience. We have a new access system to the, to the building for all of you, which I gave you all your cards today, so that's going to be part of the chief's new security procedures, so that's the first step. So now if you need, if you need to access the building, you can use the side door with your, with those guards. And I remind everybody that we have an executive, a special executive session on May 1st to discuss liabilities.
At 7:00.
At 7:00 o'clock. Mayor, that's all I have for this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Heck. Next is our attorney's report.
Mr. Mayor, I have one matter being executive session matter. I could recite a resolution if you'd like.
Yes, if you would, counsel.
Okay, resolve that municipal council into executive session to discuss the following matter, an offer to purchase borough rights regarding a cell tower located at Keneese Drive, that is a contractual matter, and can be conducted in an executive session, be it furthered, all the minutes be maintained, and be available for public inspection upon conclusion of the matter. The public's advised that when the municipal council returns from the executive session, may take formal action on any matter discussed therein, or it may take formal action on any other matter.
Do we have a motion on that resolution?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
Yes.
O'Keefe-
Yes.
Spear, uh, Mayor Spear, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counselor. Uh, next on the agenda is general public comment two. Uh, anybody wishing to address the council at this point can come up to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Ned Clausen at forty-five Walker Drive. I have, uh, two questions. Um, one, uh, has to do with the, uh, the Catholic monastery, uh, property across from Ringwood Manor. I might be saying not the wrong terminology for it. What is taking place with that? Uh, I think, uh, a number of people that I know, including myself, were hoping that that would bring in ratables, uh, to the town, uh, by, uh, development, but I haven't seen anything take place there. Do you have any up-to-date information on that? That's number one question.
Um, could you give us your next question, Mr. Clausen, and then we can, we can respond to you afterwards?
Yes, because, you know, a follow-up into that, and, and you were president, that when Steve Lonigan, uh, mentioned, um, about the Highlands Act, you know, that that is an inhibiting thing here for Ringwood, and that he wants to really chase that down and get it removed, if you will, and what impact that would have on building projects here. I'm not talking just about home projects, maybe fifty-five and older adult home projects or apartments. Uh, so, you have any opinions on what that might be? Now, that's maybe presumptive, because it's not that far along, but it, when I heard him say he is gonna make that a major push on his part, I found that very compelling. So, those two things are your, your responses in that regard. Uh, if you want me to sit down, I will sit down.
Yes, sir, we don't wanna get into a, into, into a back-and-forth necessarily. We can certainly address both those questions, uh, in a moment. Anybody else would like to address the mayor and council at this time?
Hi, Bankett Hall, twenty-four High Point Lane. Um, so you tested for one-four dioxane. My question is, uh, when did you do it, and are you going to, is that gonna be regularly done? I think it's, uh, I'm very happy you did do it, um, but I would also recommend that you test for benzene and arsenic, um, more often than every three years, because that's also at the Superfund site. Um, Mr. Heck, did I see a chipper picking up sticks at my house? Is that from the, from the disposal? So, you know, they're picking up leaves and sticks and everything now, once a month, once a week, and is that, that's not from the borough, right? There was a chipper, and I thought a borough truck at my, uh, picking up my sticks that I had out. Am I seeing things?
No, you're not, by the way. I'm just prepared to that. I had a couple of very big branches fall down from my tree in the front, big ones, and somebody came by with a truck and picked them up and cleaned them up.
Yeah.
You can briefly just address that.
There are two, two separate things. There, the vegetation waste that the contractor picks up-
Yeah.
-is, is in the process of being picked up.
Right.
But after all the storms, there were a lot of big branches in the right-of-ways, near the right-of-ways, so the borough guys also did go pick up big branches that were along the right-of-ways and so forth. So, I'm not sure who was at your house, but maybe if, if it was in the street, they probably did take a branch.
Well, yeah, I had them in my barrels, as I usually do, and, for the pickup, and I was surprised to see a chipper out there.
I don't know whether they shipped them or they didn't, but-
Yeah, I think they did.
-I know both were going on at the same time to try and clean the town up from the storms.
Oh, okay, so I wasn't seeing things.
You may not have been, no.
Mine, by the way, was on the, my front lawn.
So, you didn't put them there? They just came and picked them up?
They came up on my front lawn.
Great, okay, thank you.
Uh, anybody else would like to address the mayor and council?
She know when everyone close?
I'll second.
Roll call on closing public?
Councilmembers Bolton-
Yes.
Davison-
Yes.
Ferretti-
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci-
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan-
Yes.
O'Keefe-
Yes.
Mayor Spear.
Yes. Um, Mr. Heck, do you have, do you have the update on the American Addiction Center?
Uh, yeah, the-
The latest status there?
The American Addiction Center has gone through a reorganization. Um, we just got an updated letter of credit, I believe, from them, from a new bank.
They're in the process.
They're in the process of that. Um, they were stalled because of their reorganization, and, um, we hope that they will start again soon. Um, they did put all the steel work up, and, uh, and we are also hoping that that would be a ratable that would help, uh, to offset the, some of the tax increases, but, um, so hopefully that will start again soon. I know that they are, uh, working on some other projects as well.
That's going in the right direction. Yes, they're, they're doing projects across the country, and they're all in the same order of magnitude, fifteen million dollar, thirty million dollar projects they're doing. They went through an IPO, and they're reorganizing, uh, so there was a, there was a, there was a delay there. There was a stall, but they're moving along.
I don't think it comes, that would be.
I don't remember. It went through the planning board a couple of years ago. I don't remember. I think it's maybe a hundred bed. I'm trying to-
Something around that hundred, hundred and fifty beds, somewhere in there. It's, it was a pretty good-sized project.
How big a letter of credit?
I don't remember. To fulfill the planning board's requirements.
It's a performance bond, that they perform the public improvements. Uh, they've had the letter of credit for three years. It's expiring in three months, and I'm negotiating with them to get a new, new letter of credit, which I expect, uh, shortly. It guarantees that they do the public improvements.
But they're paying taxes, right?
They're paying partial taxes, yeah. There's an added, there is some assessment on it, but not obviously.
Actually, Mayor, the, the taxes went down when they tore buildings down. Uh, they toured buildings down, their taxes went down. They had to tear the buildings down because of the new Highlands regulations and the amount of impervious area, so they took those buildings down while they were building the new one. The new one isn't built yet. So, in the meantime, we actually lost some ratables until such time as the new building's up, then it'll be a, a significant ratable.
Did we lose or we lost from what they were at?
No, we lost actually-
Because it was a convent, right? So, do we get money from them?
No.
No, it's tax exempt.
Taxes.
It was taxable, and then it went on to our rolls, as it was when they took over the property. Then they tore some buildings down after, because we taxed, we assessed it as soon as they bought it. They went through the planning process. They then took down all of the buildings behind the convent, the pool, the, you know, the, the, the training centers, the dormitories, all that stuff.
Couple little garages and stuff that were kinda derelict and-
Yeah, there was a bunch, a couple outbuildings, so the taxes actually went down, because all those buildings were now gone and not taxable, but it will be recovered many times over when the new building is complete.
Did they come to the town and ask for reassessment after bringing down those buildings? Is that, how come we reassessed it?
No, they didn't ask for it. That was done automatically through the tax department.
It was done automatically?
Every, everything is, the tax, the assessor's department monitors everything through building permits.
Right.
So, when they come in for demolition permits, you'll make an inspection. When they come in for, as they come in for building permits, he makes inspections. And as they develop it, you don't have to wait till the whole building's up. They're what they call added assessments. If the value increases during the year, there will be taxes, yeah.
Is there a timeline here?
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about also.
We are, we have to work with them on a timeline. As of right now, they'll have to start their, they'll have to go through their permit process or, or update their permits to make sure that the, because now some of the codes have changed, so, um, so we'll, we'll probably be able to know more in a month or so after, after we've talked to them and they've gone through whatever process they're in right now. So.
Okay. Uh, there was also a mention of the, of the Highlands Act and a congressional candidate's view of it. Um, people have been railing against the Highlands Act since two thousand and four. Uh, I think it's going to be a hobby horse that people are going to ride forever. I do not see, I do not see a way in the current political climate that the Highlands Act will go away. We have to try to order the business of the town, taking that as a given, that is a current condition, that is not going to be, uh, changed or amended in any significant fashion. Um, but, uh, it is nice to hear people talking about liberty and property rights and all that kind of stuff every once in a while. Um, the testing for one-four dioxane, I believe that was on, um, April sixth, was that?
Yep.
Um, I think the next set of tests are, that, that's, that test for, uh, for that contaminant, I think, is on every three-year schedule. Our next testing would be sometime in two thousand nineteen. We just took a test now, um, 'cause it's not bad to take tests. Um, however, it's wasteful to test too much for something you're not gonna find. Uh, one-four dioxine's a good, uh, a good contaminant to test for. It's, uh, very hydrophilic. It's gonna stay with the water. Um, they have pretty good tests now that, uh, that can detect it at, at, at low, uh, low concentrations. That would be a good, some, a good compact compound to test for if you're, if you're looking for the spread of whatever's going on at the Superfund site. Uh, benzene and arsenic, arsenic is, is common in the groundwater around here, very common in the groundwaters, in, in sandy areas, in rocky areas. Uh, it's, it's a common earth mineral. Um, we're not gonna test for, for arsenic, except on the standard, on the standard, uh, schedule. Uh, the same thing with, with benzene. Um, also, it was, it was pretty clear, um, the EPA and DEP said that the Superfund site poses no threat to the borough wells, and they repeated themselves, uh, again, uh, last, last Thursday night at the CAG meeting. Um, there's no reason to think that one-four dioxane from the Superfund site is going to migrate to our wells, uh, and it was confirmed again in these last, last round of tests. Um, do we have any other questions in there?
May I apologize for something?
Certainly, Mr. Clausen.
I apologize for that. I missed one, uh, other item that I wanted to ask, and that is the shopping center here. Talk, uh, there was previous talk about building apartments over those stores, and so many of those stores are empty now. It's an embarrassment. What is going on with that situation in general? I mean, empty stores that all, I, I hear so many people talking about it here in town, that it looks embarrassing. And then, secondly, you know, they hear the story about, you know, that was discussed here at one point, about apartments going older than stores. Could you address that at all?
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry to-
Yes, no problem. The, the question is about, uh, about the shopping centers in the, in the center of town. Um, what's going on there is, uh, first, we recognize that the current state of the shopping centers is, we can describe it as unsatisfactory. It's not, nobody's, nobody's pleased with it. Uh, we have a, a rather unique set of circumstances here, uh, in that these property owners don't seem to mind having empty stores. You would think that, like, maybe rents would go down to try to entice people to fill the space, so they can make money from the space. However, that's not happening, um, which befuddles me, and I don't know, I don't really know how to, uh, how to deal with , uh, somebody who's not motivated by, by profit. Um, that's, uh, that, that, that's kinda strange. Uh, but recognizing that, that something has to be done with the shopping centers. Um, you have to also, uh, recognize that, uh, in this town, uh, with the Highlands Act, um, any new development potential will be, uh, tied to the existing development in that, in that general area by way of a Highlands redevelopment, uh, type designation. Um, we also have, um, uh, COA, Council on Affordable Housing, or you wanna call it Mount Laurel, since COA has gone away. Um, there are, uh, a constitutional obligation to provide opportunities for affordable housing. Um, so the thought was, uh, what do we do? What kind of zoning? Really, the question really becomes, what kind of zoning could we apply over the shopping center area that would make them an attractive candidate to, to, to have people invest some capital, make those, uh, make those retail, uh, centers , uh, better for the, for the existing community? Um, what property owners are looking for, uh, they find that commercial space is kinda fickle, um, and it comes and it goes. However, rental apartments are gold. They always, there, there is a cash flow that comes from them, um, and that's what, that's what these people are desiring. Well, if you go there and, and, and you look at, at that, then, we have a question of, doesn't quite matter what they think is attractive. We can't get rid of the wastewater. We have to get rid of the wastewater. Um, so, the study that was undertaken was, was, uh, you know, a couple of different parts. Uh, part one was, um, looking at wastewater options, uh, in that Skyline Drive corridor. Um, and there are options for, um, uh, treatment plants at, at, you know, at, at different locations. We can put them. We can do force mains, uh, and, and pump everything down to the Wantagh Valley Regional Sewerage Authority, of which we're a member, um, also along the wastewater lines. Um, part of this sewer study, we have the James Drive Sewer Plant, which is owned by the borough. Um, and that discharges to a small stream that ultimately outlets into Skyline Lakes. Um, as time goes on, uh, the regulations become more and more stringent. Uh, at some point in the rather near future, uh, that James Drive Sewerage Plant is not going to be able to output wastewater, uh, in any kind of quality that's gonna meet the permits that are necessary to get. We're gonna have to do some serious upgrading of, of this piece of infrastructure. So, part of the study included picking up the waste from James Drive. Um, there's, and there's other, there's other, uh, you know, large, uh, sewage, um, generators there. I mean, we, we can look at, um, uh, between St. Catherine's and, uh, there's a, there's a sewage plant on, uh, the Robert Ershin School property, uh, that outlets into a catch basin that's right on Ershin Road there. You'll, you'll see it whenever you're walking, walking past there. It just tells you it's a, it's an outflow, uh, outfall number. Um, so, we're looking to solve that wastewater problem in the middle of town. Um, you can see that their enhanced septic system that they have, it's some kind of a treatment system, uh, doesn't quite work, uh, as well as we would like. We'd like to have something with a little less odor. Would be, would be nice. Um, so, we're looking to solve that problem. We're looking to solve our constitutional obligation to provide opportunities for low-income housing, um, because there's no other way to, to get out of that, and any, any development that we do do up there, we'll have to address that component of it. Uh, that seems pretty clear as far as how the legal, uh, the legal outlook is, uh, in the state of New Jersey with regards to, to fair housing. Um, and then we, and, and the third prong is looking at what would be, uh, attractive to a builder, a developer, uh, and acceptable to the community. Uh, so, we're getting close to having more answers. Um, we, in the middle of this process, uh, the planner who we've had with us here since two thousand and five, two thousand four, two thousand and five, uh, has left the service of the borough, uh, due to his business conditions, uh, so we've had to go out and, uh, get ourselves a new planner. Uh, I believe the planning board's gonna be interviewing, uh, some candidates for that position at the end of the month. Um, once we have that in place, we can, uh, we can kinda continue our process. It's gonna go to, uh, the Highlands Council and to NJDEP about our wastewater component. Um, eventually, there'll be planning board hearings about, uh, the potential zoning and zoning densities and, and, and the layout of these lots, um, that, that we would allow per zoning. Uh, so, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts. Um, what we're looking at is, there's only one shot at doing what has to get done there. Um, and you're gonna have to take care of all the business that we can, uh, in this, in this one shot. You're gonna have to come up with a plan, uh, that's going to address your wastewater. It's going to address the viability of the, of the commercial area, and, um, it's gonna address COA, or Mount Laurel, uh, as it were. Uh, so, that's, that is where it is now. Right now, it's kind of hung up a little bit because of the loss of our planner. Uh, also, we have to bring our new council members along so they can understand what the, what the process has been up to, the, what, what brought us to start the process, what the process has been thus far, where we see the process going. Gotta get everybody up on board and, and, and understanding what that is, and then we can continue.
Are you inhibited by the-
Mayor-
Yes.
Listen, uh-
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Clausen, we can't-
When Kelly goes back to do these minutes, she's not gonna be able to hear-
Okay.
-that, so.
Am I inhibited by what?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say, are you, not you, but all of you in the town, inhibited by the man, I think it's Azarian, that owns all that property, doesn't he? Or the whole commercial property? Is he inhibited from you ever building on top of those, uh, uh, commercial stores?
I'm sorry. Um, no. You look at this, uh, you look at this in a zoning kind of context. You don't look at particular property owners. Uh, you don't know, uh, who they are or who they will be next week. Uh, so, you're looking at, at zoning and what the community can live with and desires to see. So, it's, it's really, that's the only lever that, uh, the municipality has, is its zoning. Um, other levers, uh, could be tax incentives and such, which is pretty much antithetical to the whole point of bringing in more tax ratables. So, we don't wanna do that. The only thing we have is, we can make some kind of attractive zoning that would get, uh, uh, some renewed development in those areas. Uh, we don't look at the particular property owners. Uh, we're looking at, at the properties as they are, how they might qualify for a Highlands redevelopment, and, uh, and what could possibly fit on those sites.
So, they can inhibit you?
Um, do we have, uh, what's next on our agenda?
I would like to comment on that just a little bit, if you wouldn't mind. I have been told that I'm on the redevelopment, the community redevelopment program or committee. We haven't had the opportunity to meet yet. I'm not sure who else is on it, but I'm hoping that the community could be involved in any of these meetings. I do understand that we, um, the COA goes back to the affordable Mount Laurel decision that was made back in nineteen eighty-three. This was a decision that required that every municipality provide affordable and low-income housing. This is something that New Jersey municipalities have been fighting for, since nineteen eighty-three. COA finally went away, and now it's being litigated. Our municipality knows that these litigations have often been settled against the municipalities and forced to do the, um, the building. However, our attorney said, given that we are under the Highlands Act, that we could fight tooth and nail to prevent us having to be required to put low-income and affordable housing on Skyline Drive. And for low-income people and people that would be looking for affordable housing, Ringwood doesn't really make a whole lot of sense anyway, since we don't have a lot of transportation for these people. Owning a car, insurance, that's onerous for somebody that has low-income housing. We do not have a good public transportation system up here in Ringwood, and our circumstances are drastically different from the other municipalities that are fighting these litigation. So, also, as far as ratables, we keep doing this ratable chase. The ratable chase isn't going to bring our taxes down in Ringwood. The ratable chase isn't going to bring our taxes down in Ringwood. And we have seen that throughout the state of New Jersey. New Jersey is the most populated state in the nation. We have paved most of it over, and we also have the highest property taxes in the nation. Therefore, the ratables chase doesn't really benefit our community. Putting four stories above those stores would bring light pollution to the Ershin area. It would also drastically change the neighborhood over there. I'm not sure how they feel about it, but I would like to hear from them before we move forward with spending their tax dollars on developing this. I know that there's lots of things that we need to consider, but even our volunteer fire and emergency services, we're already strained. Putting 250 apartments on top of that and expecting them to service the needs of those people on top of the people already in the community on a strictly volunteer basis could be onerous, and it's something that we need to take into consideration. And therefore, I think that before we continue with this plan, that we do need to involve the community to get feedback, because trees don't dial 911. And even if they have one child in one of those units, the cost of sending that child to school is 22,000 in the state of New Jersey. That is not going to even out when it comes to the ratable chase. So therefore, I would look forward to meeting and understanding this and how we got here more fully. But right now, I think that open space is a commodity, and it should be considered as such. We just saw Forbes magazine article for the Y Center, Ann Ziebacker is here today, and it shows that, sitting alone on top of a mountaintop, I don't know if anyone saw it, I posted it everywhere on Facebook, but it does say that we have a gem up here, 45 minutes from New York City. I think that it's important that we regenerate our economic commission to see how we can start generating tax dollars so that we can invigorate this community, but I'm not sure that the plan that we've put forth is the one that's going to solve all the issues. So thank you.
Just one footnote, without giving away litigation strategy, on the record, we do have an opposition to the number of low and affordable housing units that the Fair Share Housing Center, which is a nonprofit organization, which is a main driver right now, they're projecting 280, approximately 280 units. If you multiply that, let's round it off to 300, that project, that projection would result in 1,500 units, which is totally unworkable. We vehemently object to that. We think those numbers are not realistic for Ringwood, that they were done by statisticians who viewed the whole state, okay? And then just looked at counties and put in numbers. I'm sure they have a rationale, but you have to be psyched particular. We're not trying to avoid a constitutional obligation, but those numbers, we do not accept those numbers. That's all I'll say officially, because I don't want to give away a publicized litigation strategy.
No, that's a good point. But this is on the low-income housing. I was directing, one of my questions here earlier, is that 55 and over, which so many communities have, that's not necessarily low-income housing?
No, that isn't low-income housing. That's something that we had all hoped that the convent would have become. I think the sisters even wanted that to be it. But from what I understand from our mayor, that isn't going to be senior housing, those housings on top, in any way considered senior housing, from my understanding of what I've been told. So this isn't a solution for senior housing there. And the reason or the motivation behind all this is the low income. Otherwise, we wouldn't even be considering this, from what I understand. That's the impetus, isn't it?
No.
It isn't the impetus?
No. The impetus is the commercial area.
Well, the commercial area...
Yes. The impetus is the commercial area. If the commercial area was fine, there would be nobody considering doing anything to make the commercial area better, right? It's unsatisfactory. We have to move from there. Once you make that decision, now all of a sudden, things start to fall into place. Well, I can't do any improvements unless I deal with my wastewater. Well, if I do a development, COA is going to be knocking on my door, and we're going to have to address them in some fashion. So it's not the impetus. We would, I would prefer, actually, because I've been saying for better than 10 years, affordable housing, we have affordable housing, it's called the cities, okay? The cities have transportation, they have utilities, they have, there's 4,000 empty lots in Patterson. There's 4,000 lots in Ringwood. There's 4,000 empty lots in Patterson. Yes, COA is ridiculous. The Highlands Act made all the land undevelopable, and then COA comes in and tells us that, well, that's fine, guys, but you owe us 270 units of affordable housing. The Highlands Council tells us, your build-out analysis is three single-family dwellings. That's all you're going to fit in Ringwood from here to the foreseeable future. The Fair Share Housing people tell us, no, you need to give us 270 or so, something like that. I have serious doubts that the statutory requirements has laid out in the Highlands Act are going to beat the constitutional obligations that have been laid out.
We're getting to litigation strategy. Somebody's going to get a transcript of this meeting. I may read it someday in your palatism.
I don't want to do a deposition on that, so we will leave it there.
If I just could say, if the impetus is the downtown area, then I think it's time that this council meets with the landowners and landlords of the downtown area and also consider a vacancy tax to give them the incentive to get those businesses filled with business. I know there have been entrepreneurs that have looked into moving into those, and they have, haven't been able to due to the onerous...
We proposed a vacancy tax for a lot of the properties in town, and it was turned down by this council a couple of weeks ago. It was...
I didn't have a chance to vote on that. I don't remember that.
I had asked that be pulled for legal review.
For legal review, but it isn't anything that we voted down. I think it's a good idea to not have vacant properties. I think it reduces the value of properties to have a lot of vacant properties around. And the vacant stores, especially with that video den sign up there, right next to the only real estate office in town, that's been there for, I mean, how long has it been since VHS tapes have been watched? It's time for us as a council to take action on these stores that have been vacant for over a decade. So I think we should revisit that after the returning review.
If I can make a suggestion, that, and it's not to stifle public debate, but on the Mount Laurel issue, we have, we'll be appointing a planner in a few weeks, possibly, that we withhold all public discussion until we get that person on board, and we interview that person and get that person's input to where we are. I'm only talking about two or three weeks, because I just don't want anything to interfere with any strategies. And by the way, when I say litigation strategy, it's not some secret maneuvers that are going on. It's part of any litigation where you develop strategies to protect your rights. We are, we always, we will always proceed in line with the Constitution of New Jersey and our constitutional obligations. There's disagreement as to the scope. That's all.
Okay.
And we can move on, but just while we're on that ordinance that we pulled off, while you're looking at it, if we could include a signage aspect so that it's not just about when the storefront is vacant, but how long the sign for an expired business can be up? Give them a reasonable window of time, whether it's three months, six months, that, you know, an operation that's no longer a business can have the sign up? And if that could be included in the ordinance?
That would be a different ordinance.
That would have to be separate?
Yeah.
Okay. But then, in that ordinance, we had included vacancy fees, and I think that they were separate for in-state and out-of-state, and we had talked about that. If we could even it so that we didn't give a discount to in-state owners or banks, and we charged everybody the higher amount for the vacancy, that would be my two cents.
Okay. Well, Mr. Bolton, we're going to go on to the next portion of our agenda, which is mayor and members of the council. So, if you would.
I could have waited my turn and still had continuity. Sorry about that.
No worries.
So one thing that I wanted to make sure that everybody knew is that we have the Time Capsule opening ceremony on May 5th at 4:00 p.m. over at Ringwood Manor. We'll be opening up the Time Capsule from 1968, which should be very exciting and very cool. Going to the water results, which is great. Obviously, a non-detect is what everybody always wants to hear. And we had talked about testing more frequently back in January, and I'd gone through some of the costs for a range of things. I do want to disagree with the mayor in terms of the frequency. I do think that, if only for peace of mind, that it's an investment that we should consider on an annual basis. Definitely for the 1-4 dioxane, I think we should talk about that, take up a resolution either tonight or at a future meeting to do that on an annual basis. And then from the other contaminants that are on a three-year cycle that we should consider testing for annually, aside from benzene and arsenic, which were mentioned during public comment, also the PCBs that are at the site, that if it's not overly expensive to test for every year as opposed to every three years, it certainly can't hurt. Regarding the Highlands Act, I won't wax on too much about that, since I know we have a shot at a semi-early meeting. The one thing that I will say, aside from the unique status that that gives us in a state where everybody else is essentially, you know, paved over and overdeveloped, it definitely, listen, I moved here because of it explicitly, point-blank. I knew that the trees that I would be looking at would be the trees that would be there, the homes that I was surrounded by would be the homes that would still be there. I had lived in places where, you know, larger homes would suddenly start sprouting up all around, and the character of the town changed. And this character, or the character of this town, is a little bit of a miracle this close to the city. It's a nice little bubble, and I'm a fan of the bubble. I'd like to preserve the bubble as much as we're able to. But that said, there is obviously an opportunity and a need to balance out the protections and the benefits that we get with the service that we offer to the balance of the community. And yes, we're protecting our water, but we're protecting the water of millions of other individuals. And Jamie, people on TV can see her, but had mentioned it a few meetings ago. And I do think that the concept of a water surcharge or water use tax needs to be revisited. And so Scott was looking into the history of that for me. It goes back past some of the stuff that's on the website. So minutes from the Highlands Act error in terms of, you know, what was discussed, what was tried, what was left to the wayside, as well as any of the resolutions that we may have done, et cetera, so that, A, we can try again, perhaps we can revise and try a different tactic. And I've been talking to, you know, individuals about it, freeholders, Josh Gottheimer, I don't expect any action. I think it's just trying to prime the pump, as it were, pardon the pun, trying to help them get used to the idea that I'm going to be chewing their ears off about it and that they should hopefully expect some concrete action from us. I had a question about, or I didn't have a question, but I got a question from a resident. At the bottom of Skyline Drive and 511, is there any construction that the reservoir is doing other than the electrical under? They're not putting any buildings up there or anything that we...
No, that's just where the electrical feed comes from the north end of town to feed a second oil feed for the south end of town.
Okay, so no buildings?
No.
I did not think so, but I promised to check.
I shouldn't say that there could be a utility cabinet put there, but not an actual structure.
Okay. But that is their property. Would they need to tell us or get permits or anything? Or we would just kind of have to look at...
I think they would apply to the state if they had, if the reservoir had a permit, they would apply to the state.
And then I wanted to address some comments that were made last meeting, I think it was, about perhaps the expectations that some community members may have had of myself and my colleagues coming into the council as new and having, you know, particular issues that are dear and dear to our heart. And I admire the enthusiasm and appreciate the sentiment absolutely, but wanted to convey not only to him, but to the community and, you know, the colleagues here, that, you know, we are here to work, but we are here to work together. And we certainly didn't think that it was going to be good for the progress that we hope to make or the community overall to, you know, come out of the gate swinging or trying to tackle big issues that, you know, we anticipated some disagreement. So we were hoping to get to know each other as colleagues, hopefully get some things done, hopefully make some progress on some things that, you know, everybody agreed on and cared about. And then when the time comes to cross more difficult waters, you know, we actually have an opportunity to build some bridges. And even if we don't get a full compromise, you know, if we dissent, then hopefully we'll at least be able to dissent civilly. So I didn't want to leave that expectation out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frey.
I don't have much for tonight, other than that opening day for baseball was a lot of fun. We had great weather, as opposed to the next day where we played a wildly cold soccer game. And looking forward to softball opening day in the coming weekend and all the events coming up. I would like to, just in case you missed the beginning of the meeting, plug Y Ecology Center also, because my son went to camp there and absolutely loved it.
More ecology.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The new Y Center for Arts and Education. We love visiting over there. Can't wait to get back now with the nice weather and look forward to camping, doing camp again next summer. And I encourage everybody else to take advantage of it. It's a great place, an asset to the community. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan.
Mr. Councilman Bolton touched on the possible usage tax. Just to put a little perspective on things, the municipalities that get the water from the Wantacoo Reservoir, the majority of it are Newark, Patterson, Kearney, Bayonne, Passaic, Wayne, Bloomfield, Clifton, Montclair, Nutley, Cedar Grove, and Glen Ridge, which is somewhere between four and four and a half million people. Just to put it into perspective, you divide that by the users by the amount of taxes they pay per year, per resident, for the people that take advantage, you know, it's less than a dollar. It's right around 60 cents per resident. So, you know, a usage tax of just a dollar or two per resident would make a huge difference for the up-county towns like this, you know, not put us in such a budget point. You also spoke about balance and a vacancy tax. I know other towns who have tried that. They work in sometimes raising the taxes, raising the rental rates on the existing businesses and drive some of them out also. So I'd proceed with a lot of caution with that. The other thing is, please spring, get here, okay? Enough is enough. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Davis.
Yeah, the only thing I have, mayor, is the fact that the New Jersey Legislature is moving legislation to allow property taxes, unlimited property taxes allowed on your income tax. And I read where the governor is looking to freeze that at 15,000. I was wondering if the council has any interest in discussing that, maybe passing a resolution inasmuch as our legislature is going for the full boat.
So that there would be a deduction of all local taxes off of your income tax?
State taxes.
State taxes.
Property taxes.
Yeah, it's currently a bill in Trenton that allows, Bill Number 3314, that allows you to take your full property taxes deduction. Currently, I believe it was $10,000 or $10,000.
That's the federal. That's the federal.
That's also state. No, that's state.
That's not the state.
State, $10,000 cap.
On your state income tax, as of now, you can deduct $10,000. On your state income tax, as of now, you can deduct $10,000 of your taxes under your state, okay? That bill in the legislature, only refers to the state, obviously. The bill in the legislature provides...
What is it currently?
It provides that would be unlimited. In other words, whether it's 12, or 15, or 18, or 20,000, you could deduct the whole thing, okay? That's... Here it is. It's 3314, Assembly Bill, yeah.
It's a bipartisan bill.
Yeah.
And Assemblywoman Amy Handler and Assemblyman John Bramnett.
Can we do that tonight? When are they voting on it? It's a good question.
I'd like to look into it a little bit more before voting on it. This is the first I'm hearing about.
Move it to the next meeting.
Yeah, move it to the next meeting.
Yeah, product, this is 3314, A, 83314.
If we could get a copy of that, that would be great, and that's something we consider doing in the future, absolutely.
When is the... You want to pass that down? I don't know when.
I haven't seen it.
I have. I know it's been 10,000 for a while. It just never hurt so much because you could deduct that off of your federal taxes, but...
Yeah, you could deduct your whole amount off your federal taxes, and that has changed drastically for New Jersey residents.
I never noticed that. I actually never knew that I was only getting 10 off of the state. I never paid enough attention.
Still got to pay the whole tax bill.
Yeah.
Mayor, this was introduced in February 12th of this year, so I would suggest if you're going to do a resolution, you should do one soon.
And to clarify, this would simply be encouraging the legislature to allow residents to deduct, to deduct their full property tax bill from their state income tax.
Correct. Which is not the case right now.
Can't talk from there.
That's right.
I apologize.
Doesn't pick up.
Mayor and Council?
So, do we want to... Without even getting into the specifics of this particular piece of legislation, we can support the idea of full deduction of local property taxes from the state income tax, right? I think that's what we're going for. I don't know the particular ins and outs of that piece of legislation, but you can put together a resolution to that effect and send that to our representatives at the State House and take it from there. Would anybody want to make that... Make a resolution to that effect? Or offer a resolution?
I'll move it.
Okay. And Kelly, you have something? What resolution number would this be?
It's going to be 107.
Okay, so it's a resolution urging our legislature to pass a law providing for unlimited deduction of the local property taxes on the state income tax return, whereas right now it's capped at 10,000, okay?
Okay. And we have a motion and a second on that, Kelly?
Yes.
We have a motion from Mr. Davison.
I have it, yes. I'm sorry. I was trying to write.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Similar one for the federal. Councilmember... I'm sorry. Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Okay, very good. Anything else, Mr. Davis?
That's all I have.
Very good.
Do you want to do one for the federal, too?
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one more thing? I plug it every year. The Ringwood REF 5K. It happens before our next meeting. It's May 5th, Cinco de Mayo. It's a great event. It's so much fun watching from the kids to the adults come into that finish line. It's so much fun to watch up at Shepherd's Lake, so, May 5th.
Run, shower, and then come to the Time Capsule.
Yes. It's going to be a busy day.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yeah, this Saturday is caring for Ringwood Day. I urge everyone to come out and do their part. We have a beautiful town. Let's keep it that way. Litter is a problem in our community. It shouldn't be just one day, but if we can make a difference that Saturday, please come out and help. Also, I want to thank the DPW. Opening day was fantastic. I couldn't believe they had the fields ready to go after all that snow, so kudos to them for doing a great job. And also, Earth Day is on Sunday, and I was at the Weiss Art and...
Weiss Center, Education, Arts, and Recreation.
Education, Arts Center.
The new Weiss Center.
For so many years, I said Ecology Center. And I had a great time last year. You did a wonderful job. I also have reached out to Sustainable Jersey. They're going to be sending a package of information, so hopefully the green team, the municipal green team, will have a presence there and would help support your endeavors. So, thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I just got a couple of things. First of all, I want to wish my wife, Joanne, a very happy birthday. She's... Towards the end of February, she had quadruple bypass surgery, so she's still recuperating and rehabilitating, but she's person allows me to get to do all the stuff, so I want to wish her a happy birthday. The only thing else I have to say is taxes, taxes, taxes. Part of our job as councilpeople is to look for and to grapple with problems. And the biggest problem is rabiles in this town. And it's going to be up to us to come up with something. I'm not saying what that is, but we have problems with the schools getting enough aid, so you have taxes going up on that end. We're slowly having problems in the municipal side. So, what I encourage our bodies is to keep an open mind, okay? Because you might have different positions to defend, but you still have to look down the road three, four, five, six, seven, eight years and make a decision so that we don't find ourselves in trouble. The schools definitely need some help. I'm not sure how that problem can be solved. They're not getting the right aid. The taxing, the whole taxing formula, I believe, has to be changed, and that's one way, one thing that can help. And then, we have to see what is ratables, whatever the mechanism is to get, maintain the flow of income into the town so that we don't have to get rid of services, is something that we have to think about and look at both points of view. That's all we've got.
Thank you, Jim. On the subject of a water tax, I've been opposed to a water tax, only because routing money through Trenton is the worst idea I can even come up with. What I think is more appropriate and what I think I would want to see, set a value for watershed land. That way, the local community can tax it at that value. We just lost a tax appeal that if there was some kind of legislation establishing a value of watershed property, it could be as complex or as simple as you want to devise it, but that way, everything stays local, okay? You have a value, you have a tax rate, you have an income. If you route it through Trenton, Ringwood would wind up being a net payer of that tax. Somehow, the city of Patterson gets watershed moratorium aid and the borough of Ringwood does not. That's because stuff happened in Trenton. That's what's going to happen in Trenton. We... It would... Kind of stinks to have to learn these lessons over and over again, but a water tax, if it does get traction, it's only going to be because they see you as a wallet to take more money out of. So, let's think about an assessment of value, or at least put the ideas out there into the zeitgeist in both ways. You know, there's two ways... There's a couple of different ways to skin the cat that we're looking to do. And the argument for watershed land has value, should have some kind of currency. Also, I have one other thing. We received some correspondence from the Wannacue Valley Regional Sewage Authority. We only have one commissioner on there right now. I would like to make a resolution that the municipal council of the borough of Ringwood hereby appoints Herb Allen to the Wannacue Valley Regional Sewage Authority for a five-year term commencing April 17th, 2018, to January 31st, 2023. I offer that motion. Like to see if we have a second?
Second.
What... I'm sorry. What number is that?
I think it ought to be 108.
108.
I believe that's basically Mr. Hadley.
Literals qualification?
He desires to serve on the board.
So, he's our one representative, or?
No, we have two representatives on that. Every municipality, if any municipality, each has two commissioners.
What are the duties of the commissioners? Like, what are they... I'm not familiar with the role of them.
Similar to your duties as a council member. You're going to attend a monthly meeting or wherever regular meetings are scheduled. You would approve budgets and operating procedures and the like. It has an executive director that does the day-to-day operations.
And he makes sure that nothing happens that is negative to Ringwood.
And you're just protecting our interests out there.
It's the same format as this. I served on the commission for Ringwood for a while. It's the same, it's the exact same format as this. There's an executive director, there's a chairman, a vice chairman, and two representatives from each community.
Is it a salary position?
No.
Nothing against Mr. Allen. Did we publicize the availability that there was a new vacancy to see who else might be interested in serving?
No. For the discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
No.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
No.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Okay. There being no other business, we're going to...
Can I add on to a little bit of what you said, Mayor, if I may?
Okay.
You said, "Where are you coming in, Scott?" He said a lot.
Yeah, I'm going to be very brief. Two things. You know, water tax, we've been chasing for years, and as you know, I vehemently be trying to get part of the monetary offset tax for quite a few years. I've sent letters to every legislator. I have a whole file, and I talked to Councilmember Bolton about it at length. We might be going about this the wrong way, and to build on what you said, here's an example when you look at taxation. The reservoir, there's things that we cannot tax. Maybe instead of trying to get a water tax, maybe we try to change the tax code, which is something that would be within our purview, instead of going to Trenton, as you say, where we tax things like the value of their dam. Without that dam, they wouldn't be able to sell that water to all those communities that need more and more and more and more water. Maybe the way to handle this is to try to address the tax codes so that their assets and their infrastructure is something that's taxable, so that it's not precluded. If it was a business that was operating a water reservoir, if it was a business that operated the North Jersey instead of the state operating it, the dam would have a value of hundreds of millions of dollars, and that would be assessed. So, yes, you're correct. There's ways that you can do it, and I think we need to look at different alternatives. And I think you're right. The water tax is not going to happen. I think we would be... It's unrealistic. Asking the legislators to tax people where there's more population and their voters is not likely to happen, let's be honest. To follow up on Mr. Bolton, excuse me, Councilman Bolton, the test that we did this year was an additional test that we did. It is already scheduled for 2019, so it's going to be covered in 2019 for the 1-4 dioxin. So, that's already covered in the normal procedures, and I don't want the public to think that we don't do testing. We do testing all the time. We do testing for VOCs. We do testing according to the state DEP regulations. And it was very clear the other night, and has been for quite some time, that there's nothing that makes the DEP or the EPA think that we need to do more testing in any of those capacities. And the reason that I say that is because while it's something that we did, and it's something... Testing is not a bad thing, but there's also a cost to it. That test was $4,200 approximately. That's not exact, but $4,200 if we start multiplying that when we have a budget for the water department that is significantly declining because budgets for water departments are based, and utilities are based upon the revenue from the previous year. As you guys know, in the budget committee and the council, because we introduced the budget, it's significantly less than it has been. So, if we're going to do any editing to our testing schedule, we really need to revisit the water budget because there's not any room in there for any additional testing other than what's required by the state requirements and water main breaks and the testing that we do on a regular basis. So, I just wanted to make that clear. If you're going to alter that, you need to alter that budget, because otherwise, you can't do it. And if there was cause for alarm, if the DEP, or if we, or if the EPA had said, you know, there were some triggers, there were some trace amounts, there were some... There would be a reason for it. But at this point, we do it on the regular schedule, and there hasn't been any cause for that. And I don't want the public to be alarmed that there is a cause, because, you know, they'll listen to this, and I just want to make sure that the public's aware that we do that regular testing according to the schedule faithfully.
And to clarify, was definitely not implying that we didn't, or that there was cause for alarm, but rather just with the goal of avoiding alarm and providing reassurance that, you know, we don't go two years without testing because it's a three-year schedule as mandated by the state and the DEP. So, if we could look at, and I know that this round was an expensive test because we couldn't do it ourselves, we had to have it collected?
This you will always have to do by somebody else. We will never be able to do this test.
But even the collection? Or could we collect it and send it out?
Has to be done. Has to be done by somebody else. We do a lot of testing ourselves, or we do a lot of the collection. We have some companies that do some of the testing. We have Wannacue Valley Regional Sewage Authority, quite frankly, comes and does some of our lead and copper, and we do a lot of that stuff. But there's certain tests we need to bring consultants in to do, so... And this is one of them, so...
And then, fully supportive of, you know, looking at the tax code and seeing different ways to bring in additional revenue and find different opportunities to tax, would still like the history on the usage tax, just because, you know, even properly valuing watershed land for like the benefit that it's actually providing everybody, there's going to be a finite amount. You know, there's only... We won't be able to tax the state. We won't be able to hit the reservoir, for the most part, off the top of my head, whereas people use water. And if you pay the consumption tax or usage rate, or however you want to phrase it, that's a bigger opportunity potentially. And maybe we can take a look at both approaches.
Can we tax the breach?
Only if it goes towards maintenance of it.
We got more maintenance because of it.
I see that there's no further business before the council, except to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
To... Your motion to go into executive session. I think we have that resolution 104, right?
Yep, I have it.
Okay. We are in executive session.
Think about the Economic Commission. We're thinking... I'm thinking...